Read us into executive session.
This motion is made that this open public meeting of the Warren County School Board is going to be presented to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711. The school board desires to discuss the following matter in a closed meeting. Section 2.2-3711A1, Discussion, Consideration, and Interviews of Perspective Candidates for Employment, Assignment, Appointment, Promotion, Performance, Demotion, Salaries, Disciplining or Resignation of Employees of the School Board, Specifically, the Personal Report, the Personal Report Addendum, and Employee Number 20250528-02.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Mr. Valentine, could you do roll call, please?
Dr. Funk?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mr. McFadden?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mrs. Pence?
Uh, Mrs. Salins?
Aye, thank you.
And we'll go back into this little conference room back here. Session?
Yes. According to the votes recorded by the clerk, the school board of Warren County does hereby certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements under the Virginia Freedom of Information Act were discussed in a closed meeting to which the certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered by the school board.
Is there a second? I know you guys can't hear us, we're trying to read out of executive session and Mr. Bud's trying to work on it.
I second it.
Mr. Valentine, could you do roll call, please?
Mrs. Salins?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mr. McFadden?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Dr. Funk?
Aye.
With that, welcome, and please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance as well as a moment of silence. Our flag is over here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Is there a motion to accept or modify the agenda?
Yes, Madam Chair, I would like to modify the agenda this evening and add an additional item to the action agenda, Item G, for the Warren County School Board to consider a motion of censure.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any discussion on that?
I have discussion on that. In order to censure, there has to be a written censure, written and proposed by one board member in advance before a meeting so that it can be reviewed. I have the legal legislation right here if you'd like to review it.
I'd have to consult our attorney on that.
I'm comfortable moving forward.
I can see what you have. Mr. Valentine, could you do your roll call?
Dr. Funk?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Mr. McFadden?
No.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mrs. Salins?
No.
Next up this evening, we have the appointment of our Division Superintendent and approval of an employment contract. Is there a motion?
I move that Dr. Troy Wright be appointed as the Warren County Public Schools Division Superintendent effective December 1st, 2025. I further move that proposed superintendent's contract be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Word comments?
I'd like to say we had a very good collaborative effort to hire Dr. Wright. We're very in unison with, we're all together on hiring him. I think everyone's going to enjoy his warm, very warm personality, sense of humor, his extensive experience in working in a very large high school down in southern Virginia, and I think that he's going to be a very welcome addition to Warren County, and his focus on the community is going to be very well appreciated by many. So, thank you.
Tonight marks a very pivotal and hopeful moment for our school division with the approval and appointment of a new superintendent, so I'd like to welcome Dr. Wright. This decision represents far more than a selection of a new leader. It represents hard work, thoughtful deliberation, a shared commitment to the future of our students, our community, and most importantly, our full board support and collaboration.
I too want to welcome Dr. Wright. We had the pleasure of spending many hours together over multiple days, and we certainly asked lots of questions, and you truly are going to be the best for this division. Our board worked so well together throughout this process, and we all are 100% behind you, and we welcome you.
Yeah, and I just want to echo my colleagues, we all stand together with our full support of Dr. Wright. I believe he has the experience and the leadership to open a positive new chapter for our school division, and I just look forward to seeing the positive impact that he makes on our schools and our community. So, welcome. I'd like to also welcome you this evening. I agree with what everyone else has said. This process was absolutely wonderful. I think we all enjoyed getting to know you during the interview process. We are absolutely unified in welcoming you here and really looking forward to what you're going to do for Warren County Public Schools. It's just, yeah, we're just really excited. And with that, I'm going to call for a roll call vote.
Mrs. Salins?
Aye.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mr. McFadden?
Aye.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Dr. Funk?
Aye.
Welcome, Dr. Wright, and if you'd like to come up and give us a few words.
Thank you, thank you all very much. Madam Chair, members of the board, very excited to be here, very excited for this opportunity to come to Warren County, to move here, and to really just pour into the community, into the school system. My wife is here, she's back there, she is equally as excited as I am, and we're both just looking forward to getting up here, getting moved in, and getting connected. So, thank you also for the interview process. It was as important to me as it was for you, and the speed dating episode that Dr. Martin took me on, by the time we were about halfway through, I was already sold, so maybe by school five or six, but by the time we finished, it was, I know he was exhausted, and he was like, "I need a nap," and some, and a sub. And I had to get ready for, you know, round two of the interview process, but at that point, I was sold, and I just knew I had to do everything I could to get you hopefully sold on me as well, so I'm glad it worked out. We're certainly excited. Just thank you for everything you've done in the interview process, and Dr. Martin has been behind the scenes, providing me information, just helping me so much, and I understand he's going to stay on and assist as much as possible, and I'm certainly excited to hear that. An excellent mentor, and he has really done a lot of groundwork to really make this transition the best it could possibly be, so appreciate that, and each of you, and I'm looking forward to working with you, so, thank you.
Dr. Wright, thank you also for saying all that about Dr. Martin, because we all also really appreciate the role that he's played, and you're right, I know you two are looking forward to sort of getting started off together come December 1, and actually, you've already been working on some stuff behind the scenes, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you both for doing that, and we'll come up then. Good luck. Dr. Martin?
Every month, we recognize that our school division does schools who have outstanding or improved attendance at school. So tonight, we are going to honor three schools. And the first one, oh, I'm going to go down there. The elementary school with the best attendance is Hilda J. And it's not mine, they have, we had to go to the school today and get this one because they got it last month, too. Let's get over here, say, in a nice way. Make sure you got it. Very good. So, the secondary attendance award goes to Warren County Middle School. Did you want to say something? And our most approved attendance award goes to AS Rhodes.
Next up this evening, we have a presentation from the Student Angel Network.
Good evening. My name is Maria Bolton. I'm honored to serve as an employee of Warren County Public Schools and a proud member of the Student Angel Network. This evening, I have the privilege to present a very special donation, four portable AED machines. They're going to be placed in key locations across the district here, one at AS Rhodes, E. Wilson Morrison, Resy Jeffries, and at the school board office. This donation represents our continued commitment to health, safety, and the well-being of our students, staff, and community members. The Student Angel Network is dedicated to identifying needs within our schools and working together to make a positive difference, and tonight's presentation is a wonderful example of that mission in action. To accept the donations, I would like to bring up each of the school representatives. Ms. Lehman from AS Rhodes, Ms. Jennifer Knox from E. Wilson Morrison, Ms. Nina Helmick from Resy Jeffries, and Dr. Martin from the school board office.
Because I'm old, I need a name.
Thank you.
He's going to do good stuff.
Yep. Get a photo.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up this evening, we have community participation. It is the duty of the chairperson of the school board with assistance from the county sheriff as necessary to conduct the meeting in an orderly manner and to limit discussion to topics relevant to the issue before the board for consideration. Persons addressing the school board are advised to limit their remarks to those relevant to the pending items. No persons in attendance shall be allowed to voice remarks except as recognized by the chairperson or the clerk of the board after audibly stating their name and whom they represent, if applicable. No person shall bring into the boardroom any sign, banner, or other such item which would interfere with other members of the public in seeing, hearing, or otherwise participating in the meeting, provided that models, photos, maps, charts, drawings, and other such demonstrative materials intended for use in a presentation by a specific person shall be permitted. Upon recognition by the chair or the clerk of the board, the speaker shall address the school board chair, confine their comments to issues of public concern relating to the operation of Warren County Public Schools, refrain from words or statements which from their usual construction and common acceptance are defamatory to specific individuals or tend to violence or breach of the peace, refrain from obscenity and vulgarity, stay within allotted time, stop speaking when directed by the chairperson. Groups or individuals in the audience creating an atmosphere detrimental to or disturbing the orderly conduct of the meeting will be asked to refrain from such conduct once. Any additional disturbance after the warning will not be tolerated, and the chairperson will ask the county sheriff to remove the individual, group, or clear the boardroom so that the board can conduct the business of the school division. When recognized, please state your name for the record, whether you are a county resident, parent of Warren County Public School student, or an employee of the school division, and limit your comments to three minutes. Mr. Valentine will be doing our three-minute timekeeper, and I'd just like to, I know I just read this whole long thing, but also, this room is really, it gets really loud really easily, so we need to try extra hard tonight with just being really quiet while the speaker is speaking. Mr. Bud already mentioned that our microphones are not the best in here, so when you're speaking, please just make sure you're talking directly into the microphone so that everyone can hear you both in the room and online. And with that, Mr. Valentine, has anyone signed up?
Yes, the first speaker is Chris Nelson.
How are you guys? This was a message that was sent by Ms. Salins. At 12:34 PM, there's been a lot of talk that it was a report of behavior. This was not a report of anyone's behavior. This was manufactured 100% by Ms. Salins that was sent to somebody's employer. Just so you're aware, your employee, the one who has been so nasty to me and some of the parents online, has been arrested for her drunk and disorderly behavior, cussing people out in town and being obscene. Not sure what your policy states, but here in Warren County, we have to place an employee on leave when this happens, and then we review it, they will be, if they will be employed going forward, with a police report listing Angela Robinson's name in that police report. The person that she sent it to responded, same thanks, I will handle. She said, "Thank you." It was not until 1:59, an hour and a half later, that she states, "Angie says it isn't her." No research done, Angie says it isn't her. I tried to find a mugshot to confirm one way or another, but for some reason, there isn't one. Ms. Salins has poisoned this community for years. She lies at a bat of an eye. This is beyond the pale. She prides herself on her binders and research. I find it very difficult to believe that Ms. Salins did not go looking for Angelo's mugshot prior to sending this to her employer. I honestly believe that she sent this knowing that it was not this Angela Robinson. It took me five minutes to find out, to make a phone call, to find out why this person was not coming up, why there was no mugshot of this person that was arrested. It was not a report. It was made up, like she was standing there watching it happen, cussing people out in town and being obscene, manufactured, all of it, one lie after another in this. I fully support a censure. She should absolutely resign. This community spoke in huge numbers yesterday about what the direction of this county they want to go. That is not it. Thank you.
Bethany O'Neil.
Hello, Bethany O'Neil, North River District. I had two daughters that graduated from Skyline High School. Dear Mrs. Pence and Warren County Board, uh, School Board members, and I am reading this on behalf of Melanie Schmidt, which is the professional school counselor. I am writing in support of Angie Robinson and the request the following regarding the fellow WCPS School Board member, Melanie Salins. A formal vote of censure by the school board, a full transparent ethics investigation, a written public apology by Melanie Salins, release of all communications regarding Salins' correspondence in this matter. Mrs. Robinson and I are both employees at Fakir County Public Schools. We work together at WG Coleman Elementary School in the Plains, Virginia, so I can personally attest to the fact that Ms. Robinson is a well-respected, valuable member of our school. She is more than simply a math coach. Yes, Angie supports our math teachers, but she also takes the time to get to know all of our school community. From our IRT and the SRO to the IAs and the custodians and the cafeteria staff and so on, Angie is a member of our school through and through. Had Salins carried out her plan, it is, most importantly, the students that would have suffered from the loss. I witnessed the connections that Ms. Robinson makes with our students, and not just the ones that struggle with math. It is the students that otherwise struggle to build relationships that have come to love Ms. Robinson. In addition, Angie has personally helped me with math concerns for our own three children, even though they were not on her caseload. It is her passion for teaching and caring about the learning of all children that Angie Robinson goes above and beyond. I teach, see something, say something to our students regarding bullying, so the irony that Salins is using it regarding her own behavior is not lost on me. Do the right thing for all children and hold Melanie Salins responsible. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Valentine?
Amy Ratliff.
Good evening. My name is Amy Ratliff. I have an eight-year-old son who goes to Hilda J. Barber, and I am reading this on behalf of a teacher who did not feel comfortable coming up and speaking herself. I am a Warren County Public Schools alumni who is honored to teach in the community I grew up in. I am frequently at work until 6:00 PM to ensure that my students have high-quality educations despite there being no funding for textbooks or resources from the county in over a decade. Last year, a certain member of the board encouraged public harassment of me and my coworker. She attempted to have our names be public knowledge completely outside of the normal protocol. One can only assume it was so that she could harass us openly and encourage others to attack us. My coworker and I dread it every day, especially because this school board member attempted to contact my coworker directly. We felt afraid to go to work despite an outpouring support from so many of the teachers in this community, my union, and our admin team. We felt small and powerless. As teacher, as teachers at Warren County Public Schools, we couldn't do much for ourselves, but now, this same school board member has attempted to attack a teacher outside the district she oversees. To that board member, I know that once everyone has finished speaking, you will act as though you're being unfairly persecuted. You'll claim that this was an action of a responsible public servant. What I need for you to know is what you did was wrong. Would you have had that school, school board member's number if you were not on the Warren County Board? You were, you said yourself that you've met them through your work. As an elected official, you should never use your position to target private citizens. It was not your job to notify this person's school board, just like it was not your job to try to harass me and my coworker. You are a hateful human being with no compassion for others. I pray that you begin to practice the actual scripture and learn to love thy neighbor. I want to leave you with some verses that you should really revisit, Leviticus 19:18 and Ephesians 4:31.
Thank you.
Brian Adams.
Brian Adams, North River District. I've got two students that, one's graduated and one currently attends Skyline. First of all, I want to thank the other six people on this board for making eye contact with the speaker. However, Ms. Malins, you have not made eye contact with the last four or five people. Warren County Schools has a policy in their handbook that says, uh, use of social media un, un, sorry, use of social media in an unethical way is grounds for termination. Anything that's disruptive, you know, you guys can read it, you already know what the handbook says. You guys should be all held to a higher standard. Ms. Salins, I'd like for you to look at me, please. You owe me that respect.
Please direct your comments to meeting, to the board chair.
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. I don't know what Ms. Salins' personal vendetta is with all the other people in this community, George Klein, Hugh Henry, this Angie lady, Tony Carter. This is not the platform for it. You guys are to represent Warren County Schools, and unfortunately, she has got us back into the newspapers and stuff, which she was on a high platform a few years ago when the whole EDA thing went on. She enjoys being on this platform. This is not the platform for that. If you want to be on the Board of Supervisors, or in the Republican Committee, or whatever, and you want to spew all that hate and everything, this is, this is not the platform. You are supposed to set an example for the students and the parents of this county, and in your campaign video that you posted on Facebook, you said you work for the students of Warren County, and you work for the parents of Warren County. I'm your employer. Melanie Salins, you're fired. Take your personal drawing.
Glenn Wood. Glenn Wood.
Good evening. Glenn Wood, North River District citizen. Madam Chair, board members, I prepared a comment to make, but I sat here tonight, I haven't attended a meeting in a long time. I'm a graduate of Warren County High School. One of our two children graduated from Warren County High School, and very proud of our public school system. And even though somebody won't make eye contact, it is important that you all understand, we have a very good public school system. I'm very proud of it, and I'm very proud that you all have brought in Dr. Martin. I've had the pleasure of knowing him in Martinsville during my years there, and just an outstanding and extraordinary individual that you have to guide us and our school system in the transition to our new superintendent we met tonight, and the best of luck to you, sir. We have a wonderful school system. We have people who care. We have people who show up in so many instances to support our school. We have the backpack buddies. We have the penny or change wars. I don't have to tell the parents and citizens in the room of all the positive things that we do, but never, never have we experienced an elected member of this school board use their position to willingly attack and defame another individual not associated with this school board. Yes, she has said some pretty awful things about some of you and implied things, but this was an attack outside of her role. The attack on Angie Robinson was uncalled for, and unfortunately, continues to show a pattern of behavior by Ms. Salins that is unacceptable by an elected member of the school board. As a result of this unprofessional behavior, which brings an unfavorable light on this school board and our entire community, I call on our North River representative to the Warren County Public School Board, Melanie Salins, to resign her position immediately. I also call on this board to create a policy to prevent this type of behavior from ever happening going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Valentine?
That was the last person to sign up in advance.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak this evening?
this was an attack outside of her role. The attack on Angie Robinson was uncalled for and unfortunately continues to show a pattern of behavior by Ms. Salins that is unacceptable by an elected member of the school board. As a result of this unprofessional behavior, which brings an unfavorable light on this school board and our entire community, I call on our North River representative to the Warren County Public School Board, Melanie Salins, to resign her position immediately. I also call on this board to create a policy to prevent this type of behavior from ever happening going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Valentine?
That was the last person to sign up in advance.
Is there anyone else here who would like to speak this evening?
If you would, please print your name on the pad up there so we'll have it for the minutes of the meeting.
My name is Dominic Ruble. I live in Shenandoah District. I think it's pretty obvious that what Mrs. Salins did was a vindictive personal attack on a teacher. She issues a statement trying to say that she was just looking out, that she was just trying to let them know, just in case, you know? If you're doing that, then you would lead with that. You know, that would be the first thing you would say, oh, hey, you know, I'm, I saw this arrest report and, you know, I just, it seems like that's one of your teachers, but I don't know. But that's not what she did. She said, "Your employee has been arrested for her drunken, disorderly behavior," and then added her own details about it. That's, that's not just letting you know in case. That's, that's emphatically stating that a teacher had, in their division, had been arrested. She knows that wasn't true. So, and to come back, what, an hour later, 45 minutes later, an hour and a half? I'm not sure the, the timeline. But to say, to, to go and say, and, and it wasn't like there was a recantation. There was, she said, "Angie says it's not her. Uh, I can't find a mugshot to confirm either way." That's not really at any point, and even, even if it was, the, the time, the time lapse, they'd already been investigating. The damage had already been done. The point was to torment the teacher regardless of whether it was true or not. She knows it. Everyone in this room knows it. She should resign. It's very clear to anybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak this evening?
My name is George Klein, Sr. I live on 1728 Rivermont Drive, from Royal, Virginia. I just want to speak here for a few minutes. I have to, to the chairman, I just want to present something to the chairman that my deck, my character and deck were, uh, my whole life was spoiled about eight or 10 years ago with somebody issuing on Facebook about my credibility, my honesty, and about my theft that I stole. Riverton Corporation gave me about 250 bags of old cement. I gave it to the community. I gave it to people who needed it, poured a little bit of cybals or whatever they want to do. Well, my son gets an email six or seven years ago. I should have done something then, but I didn't. The thing is, she accused me of stealing the cement, number one. Number two, she said I was taken to jail. I was jailed and I was charged in the court system for theft. That's what was told. My son is, we're so proud of him. And the thing is, that to try to get to him, to decimate, damage his credibility by trying to encourage him, hey, you cannot follow your father's footsteps. I graduated 65 years ago. I played college, uh, high school football, had scholarships to go to play for college teams, but I selected, I might regret it, I got married. So the thing I'm saying to you right now is, I, I don't know what the situation is about, about her, but I should have took care of it when it first came up. But I turned, I turned my head to the other way knowing my son and his wife, the, the, they want to spend time for the community and serve the community. I don't mean to shake his table either. But, yeah, I generally don't, I have 50,000 employees from Maine to Florida. I can deal with adversities. But the thing is, I just, what, what she said to me and done to, to my damage and to my credibility and embarrassed my family is, it was unacceptable, but what did I do? I turned the other cheek. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak this evening? All right. We're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
I move that the consent agenda be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
My second.
All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Thank you. Next up this evening, we're moving to reports. Dr. Martin?
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. So this is my last official school board meeting. And, um, when one leader leaves, he usually leaves a letter in the desk to the new leader. And I have written such a letter, but I want to read it publicly to Dr. Wright. Congratulations on being appointed the 22nd Superintendent of Warren County Schools. The first superintendent was appointed in 1849 and served until 1860, when all funds were diverted to the war effort, and there is not a record of a superintendent of schools from 1860 to 1870. Robert Turner was the first superintendent, and now you have been honored in continuing the legacy of leading this school system in this great community. As I was thinking about a letter to leave in the desk drawer for you to find out on your first day, I thought, what better way to describe my time as the acting superintendent and what you might expect after taking the role of superintendent in Warren? But for me to read this letter to you publicly. Last weekend, my wife was watching a Hallmark movie. And, and I heard the following. When people come into your life, it is either a blessing or a learning experience. Well, I'm here to tell you. The Warren County School Division has delivered to me a blessing and multiple learning experiences. I believe you will also experience both in your tenure with the school division. And let me give you a preview of what is to come. The school board will expect you to be open, honest, direct, and willing to share lots of information. You may perceive this as having a micromanager attitude, but it is their passion for everything to go right and be handled expeditiously, and that will be the underlying theme of each request for information. What is the most important to all groups will be your ability to over-communicate with everyone. Everyone likes to be in the know in Warren County. And by the way, everyone is connected one way or another to each other. The school board office staff is unbelievable. My administrative assistant, Tammy Holloway, will be your right and left arms, as she has been for me. She can multitask like no other. My, or your cabinet members, Assistant Superintendent for Administration, Charles Kossner, has a wealth of K-12 experiences, both instructionally and administratively. Rachel Drake, Director of Human Resources, came to the school division from the private sector, but she really knows human resources in any sector. Heather Bragg, the Assistant Superintendent for Instruction, knows instruction. That is her bottom line. Her instructional staff is the best I have ever been a part of. But the real people who hold everything together are the receptionist, Tracy, and the custodian, Carolyn. They will treat you like royalty, but have a keen sense of how everything should operate. Danelle is top drawer when it comes to special needs children and services. Randa is the safety guru, nursing services, and overall expert in finding a program and services that fit a student with unique needs. Rob Valentine, Director of Finance, knows where every dollar, quarter, dime, nickel, and penny are located. I can't say enough about Brian, the Maintenance Director, and all of the men that keep the schools running each day. Nicole, the Sedesco Food Service Director, is a standout, and our Custodial Service Director continues to keep the school shining under his direction. Erin Mitchell, the Transportation Director, and Jerry, the Shop Foreman, keep our buses and cars running to ensure that no child is left behind. Which brings me to the building administrators. All I can say is, Dr. Wright, get ready. You will never find a more committed and more passionate group of people with only one thing on their mind, do whatever it takes to make a child successful regardless of economics or background. Each of them has a heart for students even when there is no other advocate present. I have learned from them. Last, but certainly not least, are the parents. I found throughout my career, every parent wants to feel confident that when they send their child to school, they will be safe and we as educators will stand in their place. I have found the parents that I have interacted with just simply want to be heard. They really want to be heard about whatever the issue is. Parents of Warren County expect the superintendent to be a real human being and not a figurehead. They also expect you to communicate in a timely manner when there might be an issue for their child. The Warren County community is one in which everyone knows that we in the school division are preparing students for a future we will never see. It is an investment that we will yield tremendous dividends. I have found the Board of Supervisors to be great leaders in balancing the competing needs of each department, including the school division. I have been fortunate enough to present compelling needs of the school division and to have them funded outside of the current budget. I hope you will continue to collaborate with them, as I have found them to be true partners. So, I now want to impart a few elements of wisdom. When you get stressed during the school day, take a half an hour and go to a kindergarten class. They will always make you get involved in their world and melt your troubles away. If that is inconvenient, have lunch with an elementary class and ask the question, what did you do in the classroom this morning? And then, if you are unable to do any of these things, just walk the halls of any school and watch the magic and science of what is happening in the classroom. It is magic to observe a teacher turn on their learning like with a student. But more importantly, if you just need to talk, call me. I stand ready to assist you any way possible to make you successful in your new role. This community of Warren County is a very, very special place and deserves excellence for its children. You are the one to keep the momentum going. So I'd like to end from starting with a, from a Hallmark movie to a Broadway show. Wicked. In the finale, the final song goes something like this. I've heard it said that people come into our lives for a reason, and we learn from them if we let them. Well, I don't know if that's true, but I am changed for good because I knew the Warren County Schools community. Dr. Wright, you will be changed for good. Now, because we have budget issues, I can't afford a stamp.
Next up this evening, we have school board member comments. Mr. MacBudden?
I'd like to just say congratulations to George Klein, Jr. and Sarah Jones on their Very much appreciate the fact they've been coming to the meetings to be up to speed for the past couple of months, and look forward to welcoming them to the board in January, working with them, and collaborating together. Congratulations again.
Ms. Salins?
I too wanted to give congratulations to our two new board members who won their elections. Um, we have, since the last meeting, we've all attended several budget meetings, and the amount of data that the staff has put forward, that's much appreciated. That's exactly what, what we've wanted, thank you for your time for putting that in. And then I also had the opportunity to attend the Blue Ridge Technical Center Advisory Dinner and learn all about the wonderful things they had going on over there. Thank you.
Mrs. Lo?
Thank you. I just wanted to start by, again, welcoming and congratulating our new superintendent, Dr. Wright, and also thank you to our interim school superintendent, Dr. Martin. It has been great working with you over the years, but especially since July. And I'm really appreciative of the way that you have been building relationships in this community, even in just a few months. We've been working together on our budget meetings, and I'm pleased that both of you are committed to working together to make this a smooth transition for all of us. I'm really excited about the direction that we're moving. I also want to say congratulations to those who won their elections yesterday. I'm excited for you guys to join the board and be able to be a part of all of this fun. Um, and thank you to those of you who came out to speak tonight, and thank you to everyone who also reached out to us by email over the last week or so to share your thoughts. It's really important for us to hear from the community and know where you stand on things. I read every email that came in. I, I'm quite sure that my peers did as well, and so your voices are being heard, and thank you for that. I want to take just a moment to briefly address the concerns that were raised by Mrs. Robinson's letter to the Royal Examiner, which is just to say that the comments in Mrs. Salins' text message were not authorized by me or this board and do not represent Warren County Public Schools. Now, this incident has highlighted something that I consider to be a problem for us, for this board, which is namely that we don't have a formal code of ethics. I don't think that we should continue to rely on assumed norms of behavior. I think that we should have guidelines of what is expected for ourselves, for our board members, in terms of professionalism, and that that should be written out as a code of ethics. I think that will help clarify expectations and strengthen public trust if we're able to pass that. I would also like us to think about the consequences of our decision to withdraw from the Virginia School Board Association. Since leaving, we have lost access to valuable training, peer support from other board members across the state, professional guidance, and ethics resources that most school boards in Virginia rely on. Of the roughly 130 school divisions in the state, only seven, including us, are not currently VSBA members. This isolation has contributed to our current dysfunction, in my opinion. I think that rejoining the VSBA would be an important step towards restoring professionalism and normalcy to our board. This board used to annually affirm a code of ethics that was recommended from the VSBA. A few years back, one of our board members declined to sign that, and eventually the board just let it drop, myself included, and I regret that. And I think, you know, that we should correct that. Not long after that, we left the VSBA, and we, since then, have not been benefiting from the professional guidance and training. And when I was elected, when I was first elected, I attended the VSBA conference that November before I even sat on this board. They also have new member trainings in January, and I would love for our new members to be able to attend those trainings, which we would need to rejoin the VSBA in order for them to be able to do that. And I would recommend all of the board members attend VSBA training because I found them to be very helpful. So today, I am recommending that we censure Mrs. Salins, clarifying that her statements do not represent this board, that we adopt a formal code of ethics for all board members, and that we rejoin the VSBA. In my opinion, these steps will help heal any harm that may have been done to our board's credibility and move us all back towards civil, responsible leadership. Ultimately, true accountability for elected officials rests with the voters, which is to say, all of you. And I want to relay my sincere thanks to everyone in our community who voted in yesterday's election. It is through your voice that we shape our community. I urge you to continue paying attention to what is going on in our community and to continue to elect people to represent you who lead with integrity and who unite rather than divide us in the service of our students and our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Funk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Over the past month, I was able to take part in some of the October 9th bus tour, and I enjoyed the fabulous lunch prepared by our talented culinary students. enjoyed the fabulous lunch prepared by our talented culinary students at Blue Ridge Tech. It was an inspiring opportunity to build unity between our Boards and to proudly showcase the incredible programs in our schools. Our Board successfully completed the Superintendent Search, which obviously we all are aware of. We have all been participating in our budget meetings where we've been reviewing the financial details and identifying the pressing needs for our schools. And lastly, I attended the CAC meeting on October 27th, which is an excellent opportunity for family engagement. I continue to encourage our families of students with special needs to be involved and share their voices at these meetings. Our constituents have voiced that they expect me and we, as elected officials, to act with integrity and accountability and that any behavior falling short of these standards undermines our roles as public servants. Tonight, I'd like to speak a little bit to that. As elected officials, it is our duty to serve with integrity and accountability, not to weaponize or enhance any false narrative. When this is done, it presents a breach of public trust and a violation of the confidence that our community and our constituents have placed in us. No member of our community should ever have their thoughts, reputation, livelihood, or mental health threatened due to a difference in opinion and particularly not from those in a position of authority. Any behavior as such erodes the public trust. It undermines everything for which our elected Boards stand for. Purposeful acts like that are just unacceptable. Our students and our community deserve leaders who model respect and responsibility. It is now time to reaffirm that true ethics, truth, and decency still matter in public service. And let me be very clear, my comments are an act of due diligence undertaken in response to the outcry of the constituents that I serve and that I've heard from our educators and our community. I believe if conduct of an elected official falls short of integrity standards expected by the Board, again, it undermines our public confidence and it doesn't represent the professionalism we owe as elected officials serving our schools. And this is why I'm speaking as a guardian of the public trust placed in me and in the belief that our students and our community deserve nothing less than integrity and accountability. Because, again, I've said it 100 times and I will say it 100 times more, our students deserve nothing less. We have a duty to respond when that integrity is violated. If we look the other way, it makes us complicit. Tonight also, as I said earlier, marks a very pivotal point and moment for our School Division in so many ways and I do want to formally congratulate Mr. George Klein Jr. and Mrs. Sarah Jones, who will both be seated in January as the next School Board Representatives for the Fork and Happy Creek District respectively. I've had the pleasure of speaking with them both and I'm truly impressed by their commitment to public service and their dedication to supporting our schools. I look forward to many great accomplishments in the years ahead. Swinging back to our newly-employed Superintendent, Dr. Troy Wright. You know, this is a time right now in public service that is often marked by disagreement and division, but this Board came together and we shared, with a shared purpose. And every Member of this Board contributed to the process. There were honest conversations, diverse perspectives, listening, and a commitment to find the common ground. The spirit of cooperation is something rare and it does serve to be recognized this evening. So this, I know that this decision to appoint Dr. Wright is fully reflective of our Board's collective belief that under his leadership, we will continue to grow in our county's vision, supporting our educators, and continue to build a district that our community can be proud of while we serve all students. And to Dr. Wright and your family, I just welcome you again. I look forward to your work ahead. The challenges here in Warren County are real, but so is the absolute wonderful potential. So it is absolutely my honor this evening to have been a part of the induction of our new leadership. Dr. Martin, thank you. I don't think I have enough time this evening to thank you for everything that you've done to bridge a lot of relationships and supports with your only focus in mind, our students. It has never wavered. I've never questioned it. I'm not sure when you sleep. But, you know, as an educator myself, that I've mentioned many a times, when you have those moments, because they happen, your words of going to a kindergarten class, going to a pre-K class, going into a classroom and just sitting down and saying, "Hey, what you doing?" They will tell you and that will always reaffirm why we do what we do. It is for our students and I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all your years of service and for the service that you have given us here in Warren County.
And that is everything for this evening right now. Thank you.
Thank you. So just a few comments since our last meeting. It seems like forever ago, but we did do the school tour. Once again, thanks to Dr. Martin and I really hope that it's something that Dr. Wright will continue and make it really an annual trip for our School Board Members and our Board of Supervisors because it was really a great day for our two Boards to get to go around together, to experience the schools, and we got to see how excited the kids were to show us what they were doing in their classrooms. The administrators, I think, were not super excited to be giving us a tour, but they were wonderful and they pretended to love every second of it. And I just really hope that we do that each year because I think it really gives everybody the opportunity to see the wonderful things that are happening in Warren County Public Schools and it just allows us to have that time together in a little bit more casual setting. I also went to the Blue Ridge Tech Community Open House. I wanted to thank them for putting that together for community partners and just really continuing to try to reach out and find what other opportunities can we have for those students. We're outgrowing that building, so they are just using all kinds of just new ideas to see, okay, how can we bridge out into the community and get our students more opportunities? And events like that really bring our community in again to see what they're doing and try to get them all involved. I also had the opportunity to go to the Warren County Education Endowment Dinner and I think they'll be presenting a future meeting with their grants that they've given out. But I really enjoyed that night just hearing how that whole endowment got started, just from a few members in our community who saw a need in Warren County Public Schools, saw a way that they could come together and form this group with a common goal to raise money and fill in gaps for our educators who have a great new idea, but there's, there's not always funds, there's often not funds in the budget for a great new idea that I just want to try. And so that endowment money gives them the opportunity to think outside the box and bring opportunities to our students that they wouldn't otherwise have. And so that's, that is a great group of people and again, just shows what our community can do. I, again, welcoming Dr. Wright, I can't say enough. This was actually my second Superintendent Search that I was a part of and I can't say enough good things about just the whole process and our excitement as a Board and just looking forward to what we're going to do next. So I'm looking forward to that, starting on December 1. I look forward this evening to having some conversation about our Board policy and we'll talk about it more when we get there, obviously with BBAA, but I think just in some times of reflection and looking back over things that, you know, I wish I would have done differently and that would be, you know, this is a policy that we should have looked at sooner. Our Board has done a really great job in the past year of bringing chunks of policy up, reviewing them, getting ourselves back into compliance. We have started to incorporate new policies. We're doing a really good job as something comes up. Okay, we're reviewing a social media policy for the district, like we realized there was a hole there that we should be fixing. But in doing all of this, we haven't taken the time to reflect on what we should be doing with our own guidelines and policies. And so I think that this is, it's late, but hopefully it's a situation where we're going to be able to work together and as Ms. Low already said, we haven't, we haven't visited a code of ethics or a code of conduct in several years now and hopefully just in viewing this policy, we keep in mind that we are the leadership of this School Division and we have to have those high expectations for ourselves. If we're going to expect our administrators, our teachers, our students to show that they can follow these rules and policies, we need to have those same expectations for ourselves. And I'd just like to see us work together the way we have been with the other policies and figure out how we can do that in the future. And last, I just wanted to congratulate our two new School Board Members. Looking forward to working with you guys in January. Moving on to the action agenda this evening, we have approval of additional positions. Mrs. Drake.
We have a unique problem. Our bus drivers are full. I think it's really nice to be able to say that, but now we need to add some more. So this will help with our bus drivers and our routes and how long our students are seated. This is not deja vu. We talked about it in our budget meetings. We would like to request this again for next year as well, along with one eight-hour bus driver position. So would like to get that approved tonight and also a Dean position at our elementary school.
I'm sorry, it's like, I had a different order, like, all of a sudden, I'm showing it in. Are you guys showing an MOU? I'm sorry, I got, I got really distracted because I have a weird agenda item.
This was originally A, but now it's showing as B.
Yeah, it's showing as B. I'm like, okay, let's just do B. I'm sorry. I just really was like, what's happening to my agenda right now?
Nope, that is fine. All right, so we would like to add a Dean position to L F K. So we did pilot and we appreciate our Dean at E. Wilson for allowing us to move her for 60 days, to go back and forth to see how this would work. We would like to add this again for next year. We've had that conversation within our budget meetings. As we continue to look at what support we can provide our schools to be equitable across all, we will continue to evaluate this. We did have two Dean positions requested for next fiscal year, one at Blue Ridge Tech and one already at L F K, but we would like to look for that position now to continue that support because our pilot did work very well and from a student ratio, E. Wilson and L F K are very similar in numbers. Any questions? Oh, and I apologize, we are closing two vacant positions to fund these. We are not going to hire the preschool teacher and we are not going to hire the math teaching position at Warren County High School. We do have the class covered though, through an extra block that will be done for second semester because we didn't have it at the beginning of the year, so we're, we've already planned for that as well for second semester.
Questions for Ms. Drake?
Is there a plan to replace the E. Wilson Morrison Dean next year?
So she's going to go back and stay at E. Wilson, but we want to add a full-time at L F K.
Okay.
Yeah, so this was just a pilot and we appreciate her for going back and forth and taking that on to see if that support would be beneficial. But yeah, we already have that position now.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Warren County School Board approve the addition of two four-and-a-half-hour bus driver positions and one Dean position for the fiscal year '25-'26, school year, effective immediately, funded through vacant salaries.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. So I have an action agenda item A now that's MO.
That was originally B.
Okay, I just flipped. MOU with Infant and Toddler Connection of Shenandoah Valley, Mrs. Spurling.
Good evening. This agreement formalizes collaboration between Warren County Public Schools and the Infant and Toddler Connection of the Shenandoah Valley to meet the federal and state requirements of Part C of the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act, also known as IDEA. The MOU will strengthen Warren County's compliance with the federal and state special education mandates. It will ensure efficient, equitable, and inclusive early intervention services for families and reinforces the Division's commitment to early identification and support. The intent of this agreement is to ensure optimal use of resources and prevent duplication of efforts by clearly detailing each participating agency's commitment related to Part C components such as public awareness, child find, data collection and training, and provision of Part C early intervention supports and services. Respectfully, I request that the agreement between the Infant and Toddler Connection of Shenandoah Valley and Warren County Public Schools be considered for approval.
Any questions for Ms. Spurling? Is there a motion?
I move that the attached agreement between the Infant and Toddler Connection of Shenandoah Valley and Warren County Public Schools be approved as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you, Ms. Spurling.
Thank you.
Next up this evening, we have the third reading of Policy I I B E A dash R2 slash G A B dash R2, Guidelines for Employee Use of Social Networking Sites. Dr. Cott.
What happened?
That's a different one.
That's what, that's what I have.
Yes.
Well, now I'm refreshing, so I've lost it. So hopefully you're up, Dr. Cottler.
Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Madam Chair, Board Members, thank you. As you know, we have been reviewing the policy on the, for the Guidelines for Employees' Use of Social Networking Sites and we have, everybody's been doing their due diligence and finding great pieces that need to go into this policy. With, the last thing we did is we did submit it to the Attorney to review. The Attorney reviewed the policy itself to make sure that we were okay and did suggest, excuse me, suggest some changes. And after looking at the changes and reading through it, there's a lot of great things in it, but I do think that Warren County can do better. I would like for, I'm requesting that we continue to review and update it with the Board's permission. I would like to reach out to our Attorney to see if they've actually written one for other divisions that are for social networking sites because want to make sure that it's, that it flows, that you have a policy and to make sure that there's nothing that may be contradictory within the policy, the word it says, one where it says it shall and then it says it may not. I just want to make sure that we're okay because a policy is supposed to help guide us and I know that we, everyone's been looking to try to fix certain things and get very specific and so it's, it's raised some concerns when we started reviewing in Cabinet and I only felt obligated to share that with you because I do feel that the, what we're trying to do is a great thing, but I do think we need some more time and reach out for some more resources. So that's, that's the reason that, I know it is the third reading, but I'm just requesting that we, to review and update, we continue to review and update Policy I I B E A dash R2 dash G A B dash R2, Guidelines for Employee Use of Social Networking Sites.
Are there any questions this evening while we're still working on that?
So you'll let us know when you feel like you're ready to bring it back to us?
Oh, yes, ma'am. I'll continue to keep you posted if it's, if it's the Board, if it's okay with the Board for me to reach out to our Attorney to ask if they've ever written one for another Division, then I will do so immediately, well, tomorrow. division, then I will do so immediately, well, tomorrow. And then from there, take their information and guidance and share it with you all. And hopefully I can get that. I know Dr. Martin's done a great job of submitting a Friday information out, so I'll try to get that to you all as soon as possible.
You know, for the record, I, I thought it was a great policy. Once the lawyers, you know, shortened it out and cut it out and like, got rid of all the red lines to read through it all, I thought it made some sense. But I understand, I do understand there's some parts that maybe could be misconstrued. Now, what I thought of it, that was maybe this could be our policy, but then maybe there's a directive, you know, the regulation that, that could be in there saying, well, here's how you interpret it for use. So I thought, I, I liked, I mean, the, the things that we were focusing on the most was that there'd be no, no personal use between employees and students and that's very clear in that policy. And that the other policy that was sent out saying maybe, maybe this is the one didn't have that. So whatever way it is, I thought it was very good to have, I thought it was, maybe there's too many, too many, too much information, I get it, but I thought it was a good use of it. But maybe a directive or a regulation put it in place and say, here's how we can interpret. Maybe that's the thing you're looking for, but I'm happy to, to put it on the back burner for now and to have you guys look into some more.
Thank you, sir.
Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you. So I have MOA with Salvation Army.
Me, too.
Okay, all right. MOA with Salvation Army, Red Shield Youth Center of Front Royal, Dr. Koster.
Yes, Madam Chair, board members. The Salvation Army/Red Shield Youth Center mission has been working with our students for the past two years. This is going on the third year through the 21st Century Grant. This is actually the conclusion of their third year for funding for it, where they are working with students at E. Wilson Morrison and they would like to be able to continue to do so. They did want to make sure that within the MOA, there was a disclaimer placed within it that, as I'll read, that because Red Shield Youth Center of Front Royal operates within Warren County Public School facility and receives funding through the 21st Century Community Learning Centers, grant no spiritual religious programming instructions or activity will be conducted on-site. This program will adhere fully to the all Warren County Public Schools and 21st Century Guidelines, ensuring safe, inclusive, and academically enriching environments for all participants. And with that added, we would like to move it be given for the superintendent to sign a memorandum of agreement between Salvation Army/Red Shield Youth Center of Front Royal and the Warren County Public Schools.
Questions for Dr. Koster? Is there a motion?
Move of approval be given for the superintendent to sign the memorandum of agreement between Salvation Army/Red Shield Youth Center of Front Royal and Warren County Public Schools.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Koster. Next up, we have the first reading of the '26-'27 school calendar. Dr. Koster.
Yes, Madam Chair, school board members. First, before I get into it, I would like to thank our calendar committee. Our calendar committee was composed of a representative from each school, also from the central office. And I will tell you this, an outstanding committee, but they also, it was, it was a very, I'm going back to old school, the rock'em, sock'em little game that used to play, that you pressed the buttons up and down and go back. We did a lot, little bit of rock'em, sock'em to try to work through all of the challenges that were there. This committee, the premise that we started for the calendar committee was that our primary purpose was our students. Our primary purpose is what can we do to increase instruction and give our students, our students the best opportunity to be successful. And also, we were encouraged and challenged with our acting superintendent to make sure we had 180 days. And so with that, we did our due diligence. Committee, actually, we had five meetings. The committee took information, shared information, worked with one another, then they went back to their schools, shared that information, was gathered, they collected the, from the surveys of the teachers and staff there, bought that information back and we did our best to put together this calendar. And I know it's just the first reading. Now, I will tell you, everybody wants to start school later, they want to get out earlier and they want to have two to three weeks at Christmas and they want to have two to three weeks at Thanksgiving. And we all do, you know, and that, that would be a great and wonderful thing. But to make sure we get our 180 days in and to be prepared for possible winter weather, we had to, we had to make some concessions. And the committee really worked very hard to go through each request and concern to say, well, if we moved this day here, then we couldn't move this day. So that's why you have in front of you the, the calendar. We did list some of the highlights, where the first day of school is August the 12th and it goes to the last day of school is May 27th. There is some differences, I will tell you. One of the biggest differences of discussion, Thanksgiving this year, there are five days for Thanksgiving. Next year on the calendar, there's only three days. That was a big topic of discussion. Another topic of discussion was the September, the Labor Day, and we had a discussion of the King's Dominion Law. If you've heard of it, called that way, where the students were supposed to have the Friday before Labor Day off. If we started school 14 days earlier, well, that law's kind of changed since then. Back in 2011, 2012, Warren County did receive a waiver. And from that waiver, we are allowed to start more than 14 days before and the students do not have to have that day off. So we did check into that to make sure we were okay. We tried to make sure we had enough professional development days. And the committee, they're just great. They were, they were wonderful teachers and educators trying to do what's best for our kids. So that's our first reading. Do you have any questions?
I have a question. You mentioned that there are, and it says on here that there's some built-in snow or makeup days. Are those marked on here or how does it work?
The days that we have designated are for the folks that have excellent sight on this. It's very, very fine print at the very bottom, such as January 5th, January 18th, February the 15th, March 29th, and May 7th. Now, again, there'll be, there may need to be some adjustments, the days are taken away. Since we are on 180-day schedule, we're not counting hours. So that's why you do see that there are some scheduled half-days in, excuse me, early-release days in there for students and then PD in the afternoon because that, that counts as a full day instead of us counting hours. So that's why those were set up that way.
So the snow makeup days are marked on here as days of no school, but we're saying if we need to, those are the days we would make school.
Those are the days, like, on January the 5th, yes, ma'am. If, if we do have, that would become one of the days. It just, it, it all depends on what Mother Nature has in place for us.
Thank you. I know you put this up on Board Docs, obviously. Has it, it's been emailed, like, have you had responses from teachers?
Oh, yes, ma'am. 100%. Yes, ma'am.
Like, since it's posted, like?
Well, not since it's posted on Board Docs, but I can assure you, we have had responses from teachers. And I, I'm kind of a little nervous because a lot of them are behind me right now, okay? And they, I, you know, and they're, and some of the ones who wanted things one way and some of the ones who wanted things a different way are behind me. I know that for a fact. And, but they also, they also came to an agreement. They realized that, yes, we want this, we want this, I personally want this, you know? They're, you know, but I can, I can tell you, we were told, hey, going to Disney World over Thanksgiving is great, it's decorated for Christmas and it's a, it's a wonderful time to go because it's not crowded. That's true. And we're not trying to hurt or harm that, we're not trying to hurt or harm our attendance. We are just trying to find a way to make sure that we can get our students in school for 180 days.
One thing that I really like, that maybe seems like a small thing, but comes up for discussion every year, is that you've already identified the graduation dates.
Yes.
That has been really for the past six years, kind of a debate of when's the date going to be and, so that's nice.
Well, yes, thank you.
Being included. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we are still finishing before Memorial Day.
Yes.
I will say, my family often takes a vacation that week of Thanksgiving and we have been crying about it in our house as well. So I certainly sympathize with anyone who is feeling that kind of way because I also do, but I agree with your reasoning.
Thank you.
Thank you. No other discussion? All right. And then approval of expenditure over $25,000, update dishrooms at Skyline High School and Warren County High School to allow for washing of hard trays. Dr. Koster.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair. As you know, Virginia has a styrofoam van. And so because this ban has been put in place, styrofoam was not that expensive, but to be able to find things to replace the styrofoam, it has become very, fairly costly for our food services. And so what we are wanting to do is we are wanting to actually go in and add a dishwashing, sanitizing station at Warren County High School and Skyline High School. And to be quite honest, that's on my to-do list to talk to the principals and make sure that we get in a procedure to make sure that students know how to turn in hard trays these days because we have to go back to the old school for me, maybe not for you all, but I remember going to school, we had the hard trays and we actually had metal forks and they have to be put in a certain area and they have to be washed and reused. And that's because it is, it has gotten so expensive since the styrofoam van has gone into place. Now, for this to happen, if the board approves this purchase, it will take a while for us to get the equipment in and then possibly looking at, over the summer, actually having this installation take place because this is not a simple operation. But the, this was, we did put it out, we got, received four quotes for each one. This was the most economical one. So that's why we're reaching out and asking the board, approval be given to purchase the dishwashing, sanitizing stations for Warren County High School and Skyline High School from MTS in the amount of $51,961.
Questions for Dr. Koster?
Where would the funding come from for this?
This will come from within the food services funding. It will not come out of our maintenance and operation funding. It will come from within the food service and we're hoping that it will be the food services funds. We're still hoping that it could be, possibly be from some of the spend-out money they still have.
Great. Additional questions? Is there a motion?
I move approval be given to purchase dishwashing, sanitizing stations for Warren County High School and Skyline High School from the MTS, from MTS in the amount of $51,961.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion on that? All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed, no? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Koster. Next up, I believe the modification was to add an action, item G, motion of censure.
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the Warren County School Board censure, school board member Melanie Salins for violation of Policy BBAA, actions taken outside of the Warren County School Board in its corporate capacity, specifically communication with a neighboring school division wherein she provided an arrest report.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, can you do roll call, please, Mr. Valentine?
Yes. Mrs. Salins?
No.
Madam Chair?
Aye.
Mr. McFadden?
No.
Mrs. Lowe?
Aye.
Dr. Funk?
Aye.
Next up this evening, we have discussions by the school board. First up is board member requests. In the order, Mr. McFadden?
I have no requests.
Mrs. Salins?
I have no request.
Mrs. Lowe?
I have two. One is that I would ask that we look into rejoining the BSBA, review what the cost would be, what the timeline would look like for that. And the other one is, I would be interested if we could look into policies, if policies exist at other school boards governing, when board members can consult with the board attorney and whether or if individual members can use the VA Corp insurance policy, just to see what other school divisions do on that item.
So we could take a look. Dr. Funk?
Yes, I'd have one, just to let everybody know, next week, the November 10th through the 14th is National Young Readers Week. So I would like to recommend that all of our locally elected officials take some time out of their day and contact one of our schools to volunteer and go read a book. I think this is a great opportunity to do that. I personally will be contacting some schools to reach out and schedule some times to go read a book. So I would, again, just like to have all of our local officials in, in the town and anyone else who works in our community, this is a fabulous opportunity to get into the classrooms, read a book. So please take advantage of that and I'll be reaching out to some schools soon.
Thank you.
I have no requests this evening. Next up this evening, we have discussion of an extension or what, what we might be able to add to Policy BBAA. And there is a draft sort of conversation about that to try to get us started. This really, one thing that we've done as a board and actually with Dr. Martin's help, I think, two years ago now, when we did the same-page document, one thing that really helped us as a board was sitting down and working that document through. And for anyone who doesn't know, we have, we spent a lot of time working on how our communication would flow from when we received something from a community member, a teacher, a student or parent, and then how that communication works from board members and then within the schools and what the responses will look like back to parents, back to teachers. And I think that that was a really helpful thing for us to do. And now, looking through our policies, again, on what our board sort of has to follow, we really only have this very skeletal BBAA policy. So I'm hoping to see us sort of put sort of our own policies and governance into place and that would include things like social media and just how we act with what professionalism will do up here. So I'll open it up to discussion.
I'm in agreement with you that we should have, BBAA doesn't tell enough. We've, we've looked around at some other policies. Prince William County has a policy that goes into a lot of detail. The reason I didn't vote for the censure is we don't have a policy about censure. I'm okay with creating a policy of how to do it because that's, it's an okay thing to do, but we don't currently have anything in our, in our policy manual that allows us to do that or says how to do it. So I do think we should have a lot of information in great detail about whether it's these 22 items or, or different ones, but it should be so that everyone understands what it is because some of these can be misinterpreted depending who you are, what you're trying to do. So I think having information about how we communicate, what our roles is at board members, and obviously you have two new people coming on, people come and go from the board, there shouldn't be an assumption that we know what we're doing when we first come on and there's not a lot about our governance. So down in Stafford County, they have a handbook for employees and board members, there's a lot of different options out there. To be able to not restrain us, but just to educate us as to what we're supposed to do and to hold us accountable so we know what it is. I know on the same point, we're trying to create a, a better code of conduct for our employees as well. It's better not to have assumptions about what we're supposed to be doing or not doing, it's better to have it all planned out so that we, we're on the same page of what it is, what's acceptable behavior, what, it can't be just assumed that this is acceptable or unacceptable. It should be laid out saying, if you had, if you followed this policy, you broke this policy, here's the repercussions of breaking that policy. We currently don't have anything like that set up in our policy. Again, that's the reason I didn't vote for the censure. So I, I'm all for creating something that we can agree on, that we get into, and we spend a lot of time creating.
Any other initial comments on that? And I think, did you say that you had maybe another?
Yeah, there's another copy, again.
You were kind of looking at.
I took, looked at one from the Stafford County handbook. They have a lot on it. It goes through, it actually talks about their, the things that will happen if you do these things. It goes through a lot of detail. I think more detail is better. In a policy handbook, obviously a, a regulation can be summarized down, but a policy with a lot of details is very important.
I mean, I concur. I, I believe we need to put something in place. Do you want us to go through, talk about these or?
Well, I think that's, this is kind of up.
I mean, obvious.
It's up as a first draft. It, obviously is not really in complete form, as Tom or Mr. McFadden already said, like, there are things that could be open to interpretation. So we would want to make sure that we have it clarified. Haven't gone through any sort of legal right now. I guess the preference right now that I'm asking is, do we want to put this forth to our school board attorney? Do we want to sit around in a work session and try to work on it ourselves?
I personally think rather than a, sort of a signature thing that we sign or note or whatever we've talked about, I think it should be, it should get in the policy. So whatever way gets it into that. Because even, even from the beginning, it says, Warren County School Board Members, to the best of their ability, will 22 things. It's debatable what the best of your ability means. I mean, right from the beginning, it's, it's, it's missing something. So I think creating a policy about it and getting in there and working through it would be great. And I'm sure there's, again, the Prince William County, I didn't read everything, but they do have a shorter version of the policy and use the repercussions and the Stafford County so. County. So it exists someplace beyond this. This is a more of a modification of the VSBA, kind of oath of, of what they're going to do. But I'm, I, I think it's something that we should certainly work on through a work session. We haven't had it in however many years we've been around, but it's something we should work on to make sure it's around for a long time.
I agree with it being a policy because once it's, it's our role as a board to create a policy and we certainly should have one for ourselves. So.
So can, I mean, can we, do we want to, I guess we just need to decide, do we want to send it to our attorneys to take a first look at it? Do we want to do it at a work session and kind of go through it?
I think, I mean, you kind of mentioned that you might have some changes. I have some edits to this. You're talking about the Suffolk County one or?
Stafford.
Stafford, sorry. Stafford County one. I think it might be good, maybe like we each, or anyone who wants to like revise this or send a suggestion or we have a few to look at at our work session and then we talk about it then. And I agree with what you guys are saying, I think that sounds good. But I think we just need to figure out the wording. I think personally that it would be premature to send this to our attorneys now if we still want to mess around with it.
Especially if we're going to be, right, making some pretty big changes just amongst ourselves.
So we would add this to your next work session?
Yes.
And in that it would be this policy, looking at being sure you have the Stafford policy and the Prince William policy, just so you can see what's out there and then kind of talking about those at the work session?
And I would say if any of the board members want to send additional things too, we should be able to do that. So yeah, if you could grab those ones off the internet and then we'll, we might send you things.
Yep. Be happy to do that.
I think that'd be great.
Yeah, on the face of this, I mean, I don't have any problems with any, any of the 22 on here, it's just again, it can be misinterpreted or some things that rather protect everybody.
Sounds good. Next up this evening, we have approval of.
Did, sorry, did we want to say this is a first reading or not even do that?
I don't think it's put together enough to be a true first reading.
I think we would end up probably not being ready to get it done in two or three readings and if we did it.
That's fine, just, I mean, it was all your.
Yeah, no, I understand.
So you want to make sure that we're considering it, but that's fine.
So when it comes up again, that would be a first.
It should be a first reading for sure.
Got it.
Yes. So has every, I know I've hit refresh a bunch of times, has everybody else hit it? So is the approval of?
Yeah, I just did.
Okay.